I can give you two to work this week, so you'll have one to share.
That's good.
Here, I can take that. Okay. I can take some copies over here. I would want you to be able to see the whole plan.
If you, uh, I ask Keith to make enough maps for each council member to have your own.
Great.
And, uh, let's see, Joe Holloway and John Hall have theirs on yesterday. Enough everybody.
We now continue with the March fifteenth Wycomico County Council meeting. We are in open work session to discuss the land use and tier maps.
Good afternoon, President. How are you doing today?
Fine.
Robinus from the record, Keith Hall, Wycomico County Department of Planning.
Jack Lennox, Planning and Development Director.
So I'm going to follow Jack's outline, which I think is very useful for his discussion, even though his is applying to poultry regulations. We're working through a process and slowly, well, slowly, we've been getting through this process of whether or not the county should do a growth tier map. And if the county did a growth tier map, what would that growth tier map look like? What would it be predicated on? What type of transitions would it have built into it? Our flexibility above and beyond what the state law currently allows. And trying to work with the new administration at the state to provide them something that can be almost a template for them to look at when administering a growth tier map for rural counties such as Wycomico. So what the council members have in front of you today, going back to the outline, is the draft tier map for your consideration. Where we were at at the last meeting was talking about the language that would go into the tier map, the process, what you would be able to do, what would be the role of the Planning Commission, what would be the role of this legislative body. And we tried to work through those nuances as best we could and keeping in mind that really we had to get this going, the draft map in front of the council members today, so we could really start looking at the restrictive nature of this state mandated bill and how it applies to our landscape in the county. I think just for the benefit of the council members, it's good to know that when we're looking at the septic bill, the septic bill does not replace zoning. Zoning still prevails. However, this is an overlay that determines what level of residential subdivision you're going to have in an area in addition to zoning, as well as the sewer treatment system. So there's some geeky planner words that we like to work with, and there's two types of subdivisions that apply to this growth tier. Again, I understand this is repetitious, but just to make sure everyone understands what it's going to look like when applied to the land. You have minor subdivisions, which is asking for no more than seven lots. Still, you have to meet all health department regulations, you have to go through the planning process, development review process, excuse me, with the Planning Commission. And then you have major subdivisions, which are eight or more subdivisions of land. Again, this bill is strictly limited to new residential subdivision. So in the conversation that you have with Jack, there's a lot of terms being tossed around that apply to this map as well. When you're looking at the growth tier map, it consists of four tiers, which the state has identified criteria for designating the four tiers, so it's not an arbitrary designation. When you're looking at the map in front of you today, you'll see areas that are in orange as well as in brown, and those are areas that are currently served with public sewer service or as a function of urban service districts. So the difference being brown is outside of the designated growth areas, orange is served inside the designated growth areas. That's pretty simple on the map. Using the water and sewer plan, all the information was readily available, and we were able to go ahead and proceed with outlining what was going to be tier one, whether in or out of the designated growth area. Tier two, again, using the water and sewer plan, tier two consists of designated growth areas that are planned for service within the ten-year planning horizon of the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan. There is a degree of speculation that those properties would be the ones that are annexed, those are green on your map, and you can see there are very limited areas of green inside the metro core, as well as some of the other designated growth areas around our local incorporated jurisdictions. If you are in this area of green or a tier-two area, you can do a major subdivision using a private, public, or shared wastewater treatment plant. If you're using onsite septic systems, you're limited to more than seven lots. Again, contingent upon meeting all health department regulations, as well as going through the development review process with Jack's Planning Commission. Therefore, there is a restrictive nature to it if you do not annex or if you do not have a community system. Also, one caveat that I'd like to point out, because I know it's part of a broader ongoing discussion, through Senate Bill 236, there is the condition that should the county do private or package or community wastewater treatment plants, the county would then have to be the controlling authority, in which, again, you can look at outsourcing that to a third party, as we've talked about before. The areas in yellow are like what I call business as usual, it's tier three. You can do a minor subdivision, or you can do a major subdivision using onsite septic systems. Also, tier three does allow you, if you'd like to, use a wastewater treatment plant. Therefore, tier three is the, is when you're looking at the restrictive nature of the various tiers, tier three offers the greatest flexibility, especially when you're using onsite septic systems versus a function of connecting to a public system. Tier four is the areas that are remaining in white, very restrictive. Much like tier two, you're limited to a minor subdivision using onsite septic systems. Therefore, you would not be able to ask for more than seven. You have to meet all health department regulations, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. The areas that you see in gray, dark gray are the municipalities, they've done their own tier maps. At this point, I think most of the local incorporated jurisdictions have adopted their own tier maps. Areas in light gray are non-residentially zoned areas in the county, to where this does not have any application whatsoever. Excuse me?
What is it, county land, state land?
County land, state lands, lands with easements on them, could be some of the nature conservancy lands as well, again, where they're protected or preserved, and their development potential is, if anything, limited at best.
No chicken houses there, huh?
No chicken houses there, I would never know. Again, at the last meeting, we talked about the provisions, if you don't mind, that you'll see on the map, and it really was as simplistic as putting that your tier two, your areas in green, and your tier four, your areas in white, have a contingency provision. If you can meet two requirements, which really, one major requirement's going to be the limitations of the soil, then you could convert and go over to a tier three, which will allow you to do major subdivisions on onsite septic systems, and the two conditions are as follows. If you can get preliminary, it's all contingent upon subdivision, the submittal of a development review application, if you can get preliminary plan approval from the Planning Commission to exceed over seven lots, and if you can get health department approval that you can exceed over seven lots from a perccability standpoint, that transition will occur, and then you would move to a tier three, again, which is more permissive or less restrictive resulting from onsite septic systems.
You keep referencing the seven lot.
The minor subdivision.
Minor subdivision. Those were restrictions implemented by the state of Maryland, they forced our hand.
That is correct, under.
Once we issue the tier map, then the county, can the county not then begin to pursue more aggressive growth policies?
Absolutely. Here's the position that the county is in right now, since the county has not adopted the tier map. Anywhere you see on this map that's part of tier one, two, three, or four, you're limited to asking for no more than seven lots.
Right.
And all the unsuited parts of the county. Once the county adopts a tier map, immediately then you fall into the provisions of what the Senate, what Senate Bill 236 will allow, as far as where you can do majors, where you can do minors, and what treatment system will be used to serve them. Then we're trying to add the hybrid component to this, of saying why we understand the state doesn't want in the county as well, it's part of your growth plan. We do not want to see a lot of excessive residential growth out in the ag zoned areas, as you're seeing with the poultry discussion. It's one of the fine lines of planner's walk of preserving property rights and trying to keep from creating incompatible uses contiguous to one another. That's the essence of zoning in what we do.
But we're sort of accepting the seven minimum as our standard now.
As part of this, the county did move their definition from, I believe, five lots.
Great.
Three lots for a minor subdivision to the maximum the state would allow, which is seven. The state has set seven or less for minor, eight or more for major.
So you're saying, is there any way that we can change that from seven up to a higher number?
Not, not to be, that's a great question, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Not, not, not as part, that's a really good question.
Who was that question again?
Ask him.
Not as part of what's defined in your code as a minor subdivision, the way you change that is from going to an area that only allows seven on septic systems to an area that would allow more than seven or a major subdivision. So code has you locked. What we're trying to do is create a system that says you can move in between tiers, contingent upon essentially good soils, which we know are becoming harder and harder to find in Wycomico County.
And new technology.
And we have to factor in new technology and what role it will play, as well as factoring in existing technology and what role it could play to serve areas with failing septic systems.
Keith, is there any breakdown in the percentages? I mean, I know you don't have it with you. I'd like to see the percentage of the light gray, how much percentage of the county that is. That's, that's, there's a lot of land this one's in, in that.
Don't quote me. I remember during the previous council, when we were working on all the tier map iterations, if you remember, or I think we were terming them assessments. I think you're looking at public, as well as protected land, and the non-title's not even on there, which is another, or the title, which is another whole issue. I think we were around thirty thousand acres, however, when we get into this beautiful document, I'm positive I got a table on there that'll tell us just how much is there.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
But we can work on getting you the percentage of the light gray, any of the colors that you want, if it'll help you make a decision.
Keith, I think this map might not have the Maryland ag land preservation lands incorporated into it.
Okay.
I think there's a couple of your east properties, because I know we have three that aren't on here.
Excellent.
There's one on Whitelow Road, and I know that there's quite a bit on Quantico Road.
And to be perfectly honest, that's a very good point. We can work with Frank McKenzie, or one of the other considerations is, given that this is going to be a fluid map, and given that these areas are preserved or protected, this is really for reference purposes for this discussion, maybe what ultimately gets adopted in the plan. We just leave the areas white that are white, and instead try to make sure that we've got all non-residential zoning districts covered up, so we know where it doesn't apply.
You know, we're always hearing that, you know, we're building out, you know, of course, haven't built anything lately, but, you know, if you look at this, there's so many areas that you really can't build in, and then you take land that's not suitable for building. There's not a lot of land left.
Based on the current technology, it's understanding that, and again, these are planning level thirty thousand foot estimates, depending on who you speak with, it's between sixteen and twenty-five percent of what's left in the unincorporated portion of the county that has suitability for individual septic.
Soil suitability.
However, you know, again, we never know what certainty technological changes may have or impacts. This is a reflection of your zoning, which is consistent with your land use, which is consistent with your water and sewer plan. So I think at this point, if the council members are okay with the approximate delineation of the various tiers, as well as the conversion mechanism, respecting that there's already a public process for this, because this is going to be, any movements between tiers is going to be as a result of some type of plan for subdivision, new residential subdivision we had submitted, which the council doesn't have a role in. Staff would make the recommendation, contingent upon councils endorsement or approval, that we submit this to the Maryland Department of Planning for informal comments. This would not be an official submittal, however, we know, again, since a lot of this is predicated on what you have that we're going to talk about next, a comprehensive plan, it would be good to get a gauge of where the new administration's at, and how receptive they are about these conversions. And again, the conversions are not going to be the norm. They're going to be the exception because of the reasons we've talked here today about. You really have a lot of soils that have limitations with regard to supporting intensive residential development.
What you're submitting, everybody, is it just the map, or are we also being how we would potentially do the conversions? Will that be submitted as well, the process?
Yes, I'm going to add the language that was presented as part of the outline during the council meeting on March first, wherever I centered it on. I think one of the things when looking at this is, we want to produce something to the Maryland Department of Planning, as well as to the council, the exec, and the public that's going to use this, that is easy to understand. And that's one of the great things, is this does not have to be codified, it will be a living document as part of your plan. When changes do occur, just like there are changes that occur as part of development where there isn't an immediate action to the water and sewer plan, you could have a property, for example, that's planned for service, and you elect to do a residential subdivision using onsite individual septic systems. Well, that doesn't mean you have to come before this body is Urban Service District to amend the water and sewer plan prior to or having as a contingency of final plan approval at the Planning Commission.
Any idea what the timeframe is for comments, Pat?
I think it would probably be within sixty to seventy-five days. It's great timing, they're going to take into consideration our current comprehensive plan from ninety-eight, they're going to take into consideration our draft from 2016. And again, I think, based on the rumblings I'm hearing, you know, amongst planners in the state, Maryland is looking to entertain innovative ideas.
So I was wondering, how do you feel, what's your gut tell you?
My gut tells me we've got, this map meets ninety percent of the criteria that the Maryland Department of Planning has for Senate Bill 236. The one criteria that we did not take into consideration is this land cover. And if you're predominantly wooded land cover, then you're supposed to be tier four. Well, then the whole county would be tier four. I mean, again, when looking at land cover, that's getting into an area where there is a lot of discretion that the Maryland Department of Planning is going to give the local jurisdictions. I do know it's the Secretary, Secretary Craig's wish that more counties did submit and adopt a tier map. However, I, I think it's important that we get it out there in front of them and see what comments we get back.
What's land cover?
Just looking at what's on the ground today. So if your area is forested, which a lot of parts of the county are, you could have forested or farmland and a designated growth area, and the Maryland Department of Planning under the previous administration would take that to a comment of it should be a more restricted tier designation.
Got you.
So we can't be victims of our good soils for agriculture and forests that happen to be sometimes in the designated growth area and other times outside of.
Is Kramer just a consensus, is that it?
If council comes to a consensus, we, we need to seek input from the executive, because Maryland Department of Planning wants this to be a county tier map, they don't want a tier map from the executive and a tier map from the county council, so.
They're saying no.
We've always agreed before, haven't we?
So, so when that happens.
What about this body here right now?
It looks to me like, I've seen the heads shaking, that you're satisfied.
That's, that's suffice.
Except for Ernie, he's, he's, he's saying yes, no, yes, no.
That could be an effective launch.
All right. Is that a consensus of council, we move forward? Are we okay?
Good.
Very good.
Thank you. Again, we're taking no actions, we'll, we'll work through the executive's office, we just want to see what the Maryland Department of.
Great. And anybody who wants to take one of those home with you, please do it.
Please.
So you got a PDF on it?
I will make sure that Mr. Kramer has a PDF, something I own, I believe we talked about that.
Was this 2016, I sound like it's 2016.
Wrap them up and go, 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 go.
Hot off the presses, council, all council members today were provided with a 2016 copy of the draft comprehensive plan. The questions come about, is this the same plan as the 2014 plan? From a land use perspective?
Yes.
However, all the socio-economic, demographic, housing data, as well as building permit activities, anything that's a table, if there's new information, it just got updated.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that whenever the council is comfortable with the adoption of the plan, it has the latest and greatest data, because this plan is going to run for a ten-year period prior to reviewing.
Do you have a PDF on that too?
Yes, absolutely, we'll get a PDF on that. So what I figured, instead of, I know that you just got the plan today, I figured it would be best to take this time to kind of provide you an overview of where we've been quickly, where we're at.
Sure.
And where we're going to be going. Excuse me. So when preparing this, it's really a function, as stated in the annotated code in Maryland under the land use article, given that we're a charter county, the Planning and Zoning Commission is responsible for the preparation of this document. This began back in 2007 as a result of different state planning legislation that impacted the county, that we were trying to stay ahead of, as well as just the need to go back and review the 1998 plan. That's the current plan that the county is working under, is the 1998 Wycomico County Comprehensive Plan, that was amended in 2009 to include, include a water resources element. So when looking at the plan development, there's five major components I always like to tell people about in a comprehensive planning 101. The first is taking your existing plan, which you have a plan, and reviewing it, seeing what's still applicable, which a lot of your plan is still applicable, and seeing what new state planning legislation has come out since the last update, and how that may change how your plan looks, as well as just looking at the technological advances. In 1998, mapping was very limited, and today what we can do with mapping is very impressive, as you'll see when you get to the map suite. So that's the first part of it, that's usually more internal work, that's staff level, and not necessarily real inclusive of the public. The next piece is the development of the public participation plan. As it's stated, that's making sure that the public is at every, is at the table every step of the development of the plan. The last thing we want to do as planners, or you want to do as legislators, is pull a plan or a bill out of your back pocket that's ready to have action taken on it that hasn't been vetted publicly. Never a good way to find out what type of opposition you have, and usually not a good way to encourage support. We're, we're in the same boat. As part of this plan update, we had thirteen public meetings in various locations in the county, east side, metro core, and the west side, very well attended, and the beginning public meetings were telling us, you know, we were asking people about, what is your vision of Wycomico County? One of the themes that we heard over and over is protection of the agricultural economy, as well as encouraging residential development to go where there's areas of existing or planned services. Again, that's the balance we're looking for. At the time, you know, looking back at 2007, eight, nine, while there wasn't much residential development in those years, the decade before had really, had really created the need to go back and evaluate, is the growth area too big, is it too small? But those are discussions that the Planning Commission has gotten into every year. Anyway, in addition to the thirteen public meetings, we've had surveys out there, every step of the way, there's been drafts available for public consumption, there's been over forty Planning Commission meetings that have been opened to the public, we've had email listservs to make sure we could distribute information to parties. I'd say without question, this is probably the most well-vetted document in history of Wycomico County, like any policy document, which just says policy. It doesn't have a regulatory role like your zoning code does, co-mingle. This extensive of amount of public participation has lent itself to open dialogue, as well as some very creative ideas that have come out of it. The next part is the hard part, go create the plan, go and develop. This plan is roughly two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty pages. When you look at it, if you're having any trouble sleeping at night, I recommend just starting with chapter three. It's all the community profile information about housing projections, population projections, and so forth, that will definitely help you go to bed at night. But in addition, there was new elements, as we've discussed earlier, that came out of state law. Fortunately, this draft incorporates the water resources element that was adopted by council in 2009. That water resources element was predicated on the draft land use plan. So while we'll discuss these elements, it is good to know that we've already got some strong endorsements from the Maryland Department of Planning at the time of the adoption of our water resources element, which amended our comprehensive plan. We're only one of three counties at that time to comply with that expectation.
When was that done?
That was done in the summer of 2009. Once the plan was prepared, we put it out for public comments, we continued work diligently with the Planning Commission. There wasn't, you know, when someone hears, oh my gosh, you have that many meetings for the Planning Commission. It's important to put in the context, this plan has many linkages to other plans. When you're looking at the plan, it's very difficult, and it's not advised to read one element. I know it is a large document. It's easier just to go to plan implementation, which is chapter fourteen, to get a complete overview. But that was one of the challenges that we had with the public, well, also with the commission, is the public would go to what they're interested in. And unfortunately, they would miss these connections. And John, you had made a comment last meeting, at the last meeting about, well, I think it was, I didn't see something in the plan about water and sewer authority, or something along those lines.
Failing septic.
Failing septic. However, if you were to look in chapter five, which is the water resources element, if you were to look in chapter seven, the community facilities element, well, land use element, community facilities element, you'll see implementation strategies that address that, again, a high-level policy, or policy level, not so much detail, like the groundwater protection report or the water sewer plan, where you really get into the top level. As always, Jack's open door policy, we're willing to be with anyone at any given times about any given chapter. Fortunately, when we got to the Planning Commission, I don't know if it was a function of just bringing the public out, or us bringing ourselves out, we were down to three public comments that were received. And the three public comments were supportive, while not, all three were endorsements, not all three were critical, like we experienced in the past with our planning documents, as well as when we started this effort. So therefore, I think at this point, we've done. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has done a favorable recommendation back in 2014. The plan. Has gone to the Maryland Department of Planning's clearinghouse, sixty-day review by nine state agencies. A lot of their comments were based on the need of having a tier map in it. Again, look at the administration at the time, as well as working to update the water and sewer plan, because the water and sewer plan does directly link the land span in the tier map. Now, we're at the planning. What does that mean? Staff's going to take you through, looking at the various elements, some elements we're going to pay more attention to, however, we're available to answer questions on any element. As you start your own internal review process, I think there are some questions that the county council will have to look at, and one of the first and foremost is, does the county want to really? And one of the first and foremost is, does the county want to really look at getting a tag certification or part certification of a tag program back? Right now, we don't have that. One of the contingencies that you have to have is a private conservation area element in your comprehensive plan. This draft does include that language. It does include that map. It does include preservation goals. In addition, it's highly advisable that we start familiarizing ourselves with land use. Remember, in the beginning of this discussion, we talked about this as a policy document. However, there are regulatory connections. If there are land use changes proposed in this document, there should be consistency threshold when you open up the zoning, the zoning code. So the conversations that you were having about the poultry industry and growth areas and non-designate growth areas, and what should be the uses, or conversely, what shouldn't be the uses? And how do we eliminate compatibility? That is what a good land use plan is about. Right now, the county, up until probably this year, has been in a very fortunate position to have good zoning in place, as well as good land use. There's a little bit inconsistency, like in all jurisdictions, just because of the ordering of documents. However, we are seeing some changes in the role of land use. And that would be considerations that this county council will look at when reviewing this document. So again, add a wheelbarrow. That I could bring in here of all the companion documents that this references. I mean, it would be hard to not limit, it's almost everything we've worked on. And you see, while there's a function of metropolitan planning organization, parks and recreation commission, urban service district for the water and sewer plan, land preservation parks and rec plans mentioned, long-range transportation plans, as well as all the various resources that are out there for different types of data that are included in the. And. I think as we go along, it's just going to be the style of what fits the council the best. One of the approaches I've seen that's worked with the capital improvement program is just opening up a few chapters at a time, keeping in mind there's context between them. And that would be our responsibility to make sure we provide those linkages or cross-references and move through the plan accordingly. Where the council has comfort, then we start talking about setting the final adoption schedule.
What do you think in the next meeting you'd like to?
I think if contingent upon council's approval, I think we should be able to get through the first four, if not five chapters. When you start looking at the document, a lot of the first few chapters are background about different planning law that's taken place since 1992. It's applicable, but it has no real policy implications. You'll find a lot of information in this document. It's kind of a central repository. If you don't know about tidal wetlands law, you're going to find it in the sensitive areas. If you don't know about forest conservation or whatever area, you're going to find, what you won't find is a recommendation that we're saying make more strict. And that would. We're up for alternatives. You tell us what works best for you, and that's how we'll present this information. You think you'll see that it will be an increasing degree of complexity, especially when we get to the land use plan, because for every proposed land use change, it's our intention to show you not only where the land use change is, but how that would translate to zoning. For any changes of uses that would happen as part of a zoning code, we will highlight those and show you how they would fit into our current zoning code.
Mr. President, would it, would it be appropriate to ask the council, for you to ask the council, what block of time do you think you could reserve in coming meetings to go over this? And that will let the planning staff know how much, how much they can cover in that period of time and give you in advance, say, we're going to have forty-five minutes at the next meeting, and please review chapters one through seven, and you can plan to cover them in that period of time. Maybe it's not seven, but that, would that be a process that you think would work well for the council?
That's a good idea. You suggested that would be familiar with chapter one through four. Is that going to be too much information to try to review in forty-five minutes?
Maybe thirteen minutes, one through one through four.
Okay. So what would you recommend for like the next, you said one through four for the next meeting, or one through?
The council's fine, I'd like to do one through five. I will take you through the water resources element. Right. And also, as a good starting point. For the next parts of the conversation, agriculture. And again, in some meetings, you're going to find. That we can get through several elements. They're all germane to the discussion, however, how it all ties together. And there's. Different degrees of complexity. When we get to the agriculture chapter, that might be an individual meeting, but there's a lot to go over.
We'll be prepared for one, two, five at the next meeting.
Is there anything from a staff perspective we can provide in advance? I know we're going to get council administrator copies of the plan electronically. We will update what is on the county website. We will update what is at the county library. Anything that the council could use to help with their review. If you don't know now, please feel free to run it through the council and share it.
For some reason, the last draft plan I had in 2014 didn't have any of the maps in it, or no why, but it just didn't have any of the maps in it, unless maybe the one that I, I don't even know where I got it from. And there could be one out there that has all the maps in it, I just didn't have the right one.
We'll make sure.
That'd be good. And keep in mind too, that there's two ways on this PDF where you convert it electronically, then we can highlight it. Some of our brief book, we can't highlight it because it's been, like, it's copied to media through scanning, I guess.
I'll work with Laura on that. To make sure that formatting wise.
Just electronic versions opposed to scanning.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Okay. Any other questions?
That's pretty timely. We have always had any discussions.
Entertain a motion to adjourn the open work session so we can go into closed session. Second, all is in favor?